East Hampton Village Board, we are live streaming and recording. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Today is March 21st, 2025, 11:00 a.m. Welcome to East Hampton Village Board Meeting. If you could all stand for a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as one.
If you could all just stay standing for a second. I'd just like to get a moment of silence for Patty Ferrin's husband, which was Ken Ferrin. He passed earlier this week. They're longtime residents, such great people. So I just wanted to take a minute to remember him and wish the best to the family. Thank you. All right. We have a lot on the agenda today. So let's start with, you know, I read a little bit about Patty and Ken. And it was just amazing that they were skiing partners, tennis partners, biking partners. They biked all over the world together. It was, it's just a real, it seems sudden to me, but I guess it wasn't as sudden, because I talked to Patty and I guess he's been sick for a while. But, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna miss Ken. He was a real supporter and a really nice person. And, you know, my heart goes out to Patty. So, all right, let's, Kerry, could you give us update on Hampton's whodunit?
Sure. I'm sure you've seen the banners went up this week. Thank you, everybody. So Hampton's Whodunit is April 10th to 13th. We're the biggest mystery and crime festival now in New York. And we have amazing panels, forensic experts, true crime experts. Our most popular event, which is free, but signups end in one second, are the two graveyard tours hosted by Hugh King, who talks about goody garlic. So he'll be doing that again this year. So hope you can make it. It's gonna be a lot of fun events and panels and nighttime events, including Wine and Crime, which will be held here. Thank you to the fire department. So please get your tickets.
Great. Marcos, can you update us on the 5K?
I believe it's just the main beach, May 4th, Sunday morning, 9:00 a.m. And I believe there's a few hundred people already signed up.
Great. And is Gloria here? No. Gloria brought to our attention last board meeting that Saturday, this Saturday is Earth Hour. And it is a time when everyone shuts their lights off between 8:30 and 9:30 p.m. to support the healthy earth. So if you want to join in that, that would be, that would be great. So I wanted to thank Gloria for bringing that to our attention. Next up is roll call.
Mayor Julie Larson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi?
Here.
Trustee Sandra Melendez?
Here.
Trustee Kerry Doyle?
Here.
Trustee Sarah Amadon?
Here.
Administrator Marcos Baladron?
Here.
Village Attorney Lisa Perillo?
Here.
Terrific. Hugh, you're up.
Thank you for inviting all these people to hear this.
Oh, could we please unmute Hugh's microphone?
Are they?
Can we please unmute Hugh King's microphone?
You want to mute it?
Oh, I said unmute it, that's all.
Okay, couple of reports. John Marshall's students from the fourth grade toured the Gardner and Panago Mills this spring so far. The Trails Preservation Society toured the Three Village Windmills. The hedges-in owners have received information about the history of their building. And the 1770 House has also received information about the history of their building. Okay, today it's former chief, police chief Carl Dottleman, okay? Mr. Dottleman was born in Saarkaber, August 23rd, 1926. He eventually moved to King Street in East Hampton, where he graduated from East Hampton High School. He joined the U.S. Navy Amphibious Forces on his 17th birthday during World War II in 1943. Before he was discharged from the Navy in 1947, he was awarded the Good Conduct Medal, the American Defense Service Medal, the Asiatic Pacific Campaign Medal. Mr. Dottleman joined the village police in 1950, when there was just five men, one Harley-Davidson motorcycle, and a Hudson patrol car. The East Hampton star in the interview in 1977, in those days, the headquarters were in the village hall on Main Street. That's 27 Main Street, right? And when a cell was needed, officers used the one the town police had in the second floor of the old post office building, which became the Barefoot Contessa, right, at the time. The pay was low. And to supplement his income, he would park cars at summer colony parties. And during the '50s, he had three part-time jobs, working for Williams Funeral Home, delivering liquor for Kelly's Liquor Store, and as a contractor. He was also a member of the East Hampton Fire Department. Mr. Dottleman was the founder and first president of the East Hampton Village Police Benevolent Association, in the time, he said, when salaries and fringe benefits were decided with a handshake. After 10 years of moving up in the ranks, he quickly made sergeant in 1962, lieutenant in 1967, and chief when Francis Letty retired in 1968. After 10 years as the police chief, he retired at the age of 50. When asked during an exit interview why he was retiring, he said, 27 years is enough. So that's Carl Dottleman. And by the way, Tom Prieto and Mike Baucher were here in 1657 as village inspectors, because you had to have a ladder that went up to the top of your house in 1657, because the roof was thatched. And you had to make sure that the daubing around the chimney was there, otherwise the place would catch on fire. So they've been here a long time.
Thank you, Hugh. Next up is Mike Baucher to talk about MS-4 stormwater.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Just a little quick update.
Mike, my apologies, but I think I gotta cut you off right there at the beginning. I'm sure you were here to...
I heard about some...
I'm sure you were here very prepared today for the MS-4 stormwater presentation. And Lord knows that every year you make it riveting. But today, you've been brought here under false pretenses, sir.
Yeah, so we're very happy to be here this morning to honor Mike for his long time service to the village. So I have a short speech to read and then a presentation to give to Mike. So stand by. Good morning, everyone. It is my honor to stand here before you to present only the second-ever Key to the Village Award, a recognition reserved for those whose contributions to our community are truly extraordinary. The Key to the Village is not an award we give often. In fact, it's one of the highest honors the village can bestow. It is not about titles or positions. It's about exceptional service, dedication, and unwavering commitment to the care and well-being of East Hampton Village. It is awarded only to those who have gone above and beyond, who have given their time, talent, and heart to making this village the best it can be. Today's recipient of this prestigious honor is Mike Baucher, a man who has dedicated more than 30 years to the village of East Hampton, quietly ensuring that the place we call home is maintained to the highest possible standards. Mike has been the backbone of our operations, the one ensuring that our roads are safe, our public spaces are pristine, and our infrastructure is strong. He has been a true leader in our Public Works Department, always putting the village first, always ensuring that things get done, not just done, but done right. It is with great pride that we present the Key to the Village of East Hampton to Mike Baucher in recognition of his outstanding service, his dedication, and his profound impact on our community. Mike, on behalf of all the residents, the Board of Trustees, and over 400 of our employees and volunteers, thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for the many years of service. We are grateful, and this honor is well-deserved.
Thank you. I'd also like to mention that today is Mike's birthday. So happy birthday, Mike. So what do you got to say?
So you really don't want to hear about stormwater?
I really don't.
No, no, no.
Thanks for all that hard work, though.
I will just say this, if you guys don't really need to hear any of this, sneaky people. I appreciate it very much. It's very kind of you, and it's been a pleasure. It's been fun. But what did Hugh just say? 33 years is long enough. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
At the request of the DPW liaison, Sandra Melendez, could we get a round of applause? Because it's a rare occurrence to have all the members of DPW here. We never get to do that. If we could give them a round of applause for absolutely everything.
Thanks, everybody. Next up is Chief.
Good morning, members of the public, the village board, those watching. Today is another great day for the village, village police. Have some awards. We're making a promotion. And again, I'd just like to thank the village board for their unwavering support of this police department when it comes to public safety. And it is very much appreciated on my end and amongst the ranks. I have one of the best police departments that I know of, that is out there. I have great men and women that work for us. And I appreciate the support of the village board with these vital decisions, putting people in key roles. So I really do appreciate that. Today I have the honor of promoting one through the ranks from a sergeant. I'm gonna start with that, Stephen Shades. He started as a TCO in 1997 for us. So that's, for those that don't know that, but many of you have gotten parking tickets, I would assume, here. Dr. Belleg, anyway. Scaf law is coming for you after we get that tow truck, Jay Cox. So, but he started in 97 as a TCO, which is one of our meter maids, you know, in other communities. And he worked his way to start here in 2004 as a sworn police officer. And he's gone through the ranks as a police officer. He was a detective. He's a sergeant with his last rank here. And now I'm happy to be able to move him to the rank of lieutenant, which in the police department is, you know, one of my right-hand men or women to help me with the daily operations, administrative policy. He's also was instrumental in starting our drone program here. We never had that. Him and, it also keeps the nuts and bolts together of our accreditation. It's a highly coveted award across the state. There's not many that have it. And to put our police department with policies that is accepted by the state is a distinguished honor for us to be part of that. I'm happy to have his, that they were able to find a flight. And the weather isn't too for his mother, Roseanne, and the father. Steve, who's stick, gave many, many years to the East Hampton Town Police. When I started here, he was a pleasure and always a pleasant voice to hear on the radio. And he is, he was an East Hampton Town dispatcher for many years. So his parents, it's a happy, joyous time for you. And we appreciate the service and your son for us. So Steve, if you want to come up here, I want to give you your badge. Okay, so I have some department recognition awards that we're, we're going to implement this year. And it is awards that throughout the year, service, arrests, and calls that have, our officers have gone above and beyond the duty, whether it's saving lives, taking guns off the street, making numerous DEW's and taking them off the street. I have some awards that we've gone through for 2004. And I'd just like to take the time and recognize these officers for their outstanding duty for the community, the residents, not only of East Hampton, but as we all know, those that, in these cases, some of these cases that are just transients, that were tourists, that our officers either, you know, save their lives or we put them in jail. So, so I'd like to, I'd like to start by date, on June 11th, Lieutenant Bartlemy, can you come up here, please? Lieutenant Bartlemy is my XO, my number-two guy. He helps me tremendously on a daily basis to make the smooth operation of this, the police department go on. And on June 11th, we're recognizing him for a life-saving, department recognition for a life-saving act. He was on, out on the street, as he is a lot, and we had a call of a choking victim at, a female bank teller who was on her meal period at the Bank of America. She was eating her meal, and she started to choke. 911 was called. When Lieutenant Bartlemy was one of the first ones there, got on scene, he administered the Heimlich maneuver, which unlodged the unconscious female's airway. And then she became conscious and was transported. She's alive today for, I believe, the quick thinking of Lieutenant Bartlemy. And the department's gonna issue him the Department Recognition Award for Life Saving Act. Thank you, Lieutenant. Okay, if I could call up Officer Brendan Worth and Officer John Clark, if you'd please come up here, gentlemen. So I have Officer Worth and Officer Clark. Officer Clark has other commendations that he's getting today, but they were both on one call to start this on July 24th. On that particular day, we received a call, an aided case of an individual in a car parked along the side of the road at Steven Hands Path and Montauk Highway, with an individual that was having chest pains. As the officers got there and the situation for that victim turned for the worse, the individual went into cardiac arrest. Officer Clark and Officer Worth quickly administered our CPR and the automatic external defibrillator, which restored a pulse. The subject was transported to Southampton Hospital and is alive today for the equipment we had and the training and their being at the right place at the right time we were able to get there. So Officer Worth, that is for you. Thank you very much. And Officer Clark, I have more for you. So that's the one event. But Officer Clark, I have not only the life-saving act for that, but John, also, I'm getting a Department Recognition Award for, which was covered, the arrest of the subject, the car stop that had the gun and the criminal possession of a weapon, that arrest. He got a Department Recognition Award and also a Officer of the Year Award bar for that. So he's getting three for his outstanding service for this year. Thank you, John. Okay, if I could have PO Niggles, PO Brandon Esposito, Lieutenant Shades, and PO Jack, please come on up. Thank you, gentlemen. On the evening of August 7th of this past year, we received another ambulance call, an aided case at the Palm Restaurant, for a elderly female that was choking. Upon arrival, the officers found a female individual that the staff there was attempting to treat that was unconscious and had went into cardiac arrest. The officers here provided the Heimlich maneuver, CPR, which unlodged the piece of steak that she was eating, and restored full pulse and consciousness. The female elderly woman is a resident, lives on Main Street, and she was transported to Southampton Hospital, and she is alive today for the actions of this squad that was working on August 7th. So for that, for that reason, I'm gonna issue all these officers a Department Recognition Award for life-saving in this event, for saving one of another life saved in the village. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. I have two more awards here for two more officers. On August 31st, it goes back to the call for the gun call. Sergeant Gogger, if you could come up here, please? And this goes again to the call back in August 31st of the traffic stop, PO Clark. Sergeant Gogger was the supervisor working that evening and an instrument part of a hands-on operation to successfully take that individual into custody without any further ado or event that could have led to, obviously, the tragedy of injuring one of our officers. So, you know, it was later found out that the subject had a handgun, a loaded handgun in his waistband, as we've talked about and honored these officers before. So it's always a dangerous job, even here in East Hampton, and you don't know what your, you know, traffic stops are dangerous. And I'm glad this turned out well for them. They were also recognized as Police Office of the Year and a Department Recognition Award. Also, Officer Green, who is not here today, is going to get a department award for the criminal possession of the weapon, police officer of the year. And he's also receiving Excellent Police Duty Award for, Officer Green had 18 DEW arrests. So he took 18 drunk drivers and potential, you know, catastrophe off the road, and we're going to recognize him. Unfortunately, he's sick, so he will get this. Thank you, Sergeant Gogger. Thank you, village board.
Thank you. As you can see, we have a terrific police department. And you're in good hands when you're, when you're out at night or during the day, and God forbid something bad happens to you, you know you've got good people coming to help you. So I thought it was fitting that we have a top cop award for the overall, top cop for the year of 2024. It's something I thought was important to start. This will be the first year, and we'll do this annually at these award ceremonies, where we'll, the village board will choose a top cop, and they'll receive the mayor's award. And this year, it is going to Robbie Green in recognition of your distinguished service and dedication to the police department and the residents of East Hampton. And it's presented by myself to Robbie. Unfortunately, he's not here today. As the chief had said, he's out sick. And we have another presentation from the foundation for Robbie, if you want to come up. If you can come up and accept this as well? I'll just read the presentation. Excellence in Law Enforcement Award to Robert P. Green III. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the East Hampton Village Foundation in collaboration with the Police, Fire, and EMS Council, we honor and recognize this officer for his outstanding contributions to law enforcement. His dedication, professionalism, and commitment to East Hampton Village community exemplifies his extraordinary service. And if you would accept this on his behalf, and we'll do it at another point.
I'd just like to, just to give a really big thank you to the East Hampton Village Foundation and Brad. There are a lot of things that they've done that may not have gone recognized, from inception of giving us quads, donating quads, to most recently, we have this Flock camera system that is providing a barrier around our village, shall we say, to help us, notify us of bad people that are coming into the village, that are wanted, and to help us, law enforcement, to detect them. If they do and they leave, we can get, it's a tremendous program. It also lets us access thousands of cameras all the way across the United States, this program. So we can watch them and find where they're, where they're going. So that is a tremendous, along with a new regroup program that the foundation to notify residents of any emergencies that may be going on, whether it's a hurricane or events that need to be, if a Tuesday at Main is canceled, to facilitate a smooth communication lines with our residents. So I really appreciate the support that you've given and you continue to give law enforcement here in East Hampton Village. Thank you, Brad.
Hey, chief, just, just to say, the Flock program, what does that cost a year?
The Flock cost is, costs us, the foundation's is a $30,000 a year donation every year to maintain those cameras and give us the access to it. And it doesn't also, it's just not for us. It will help East Hampton Town, Southampton Town, any law enforcement agency has the ability to log onto this for information sharing, to look for potential criminals, you know, somebody with Alzheimer's that's a lost, a silver alert. So it's not just for us specifically. It really helps law enforcement across, across this country. If somebody in Maryland's looking for somebody that's wanted, you put the plate in and it might say he's in East Hampton. So it is a true system that really far helps law enforcement across this country. So it really is a, is a huge step in the right direction to hopefully prevent crime. Maybe people hear that we have this, that we have this barrier around East Hampton Village, that maybe they'll try to do bad things somewhere else, certainly, and help us make convictions and bring these people, if they try to do bad things, to justice. So it's a, it's a huge, huge addition to law enforcement and public safety in East Hampton Village.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody. Thank you all, all the recipients. Highway Department, thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. If anybody would like to leave at this point, certainly is a good time. We're gonna get into the rest of the board meeting, which probably doesn't interest most people.
Lots of words.
Yes.
Lots of words. Yes.
Yeah.
We're going to resume. LTV, you ready?
We are up.
All right. We're back in session. Next up will be introductory four, which is a proposed local law amending Village v. East Hampton Code, Chapter 278, zoning 278-7, which we are going to close, I'm going to look for a motion to close that as we've made substantial changes to it, and we're going to renotice it.
Right.
That's the one we talked about last month, where we're having the local attorneys do the mailings. So we've changed it, we're going to change it to 14 days instead of 10. And I think that's the substantial change, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So we're going to, if I can get a motion to close this, make a motion to close it.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that hearing is now closed and done with, and we'll introduce a new legislation shortly. Okay, next up.
Introductory number seven of 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 62, Article 2, Alarm Systems, Section 62.3, Registration Required, B123.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard? All right. We're going to keep that open for one more month. Is there anyone who has a public comment? Okay. We're going to get into motions and resolutions. Here we go.
Resolution number 57 of 2025, approved claim vouchers for the month of March.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 58, approved warrants as listed, number 31 Guaranties, number 32 and 33 General Fund, number 34 General Fund Warrant, and number 35 Capital Fund.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 59, approved budget transfer Schedule 4, Schedule Number 4, Reference Number 4, dated March 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 60, approved minutes from the Board of Trustees meetings held on January 24th and February 7th.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 61, approved departmental reports.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 62, approved public notice concerning unpaid taxes for the year 2024 to 2025 to be published in the East Hampton Star.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 63, approve authorization of the purchase of tax liens as set forth in Chapter 256-25, taxation, village tax sales, local law number 10 of 2017, amount not to exceed $93,399.58 to be paid from the undesignated fund balance.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 64, approve the Department of Emergency Medical Service EMS volunteers who have met requirements and qualified for one year of service award credit for the East Hampton Village Volunteer Ambulance Workers Defined Benefit, LOSAP, 2024.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 65, approve the East Hampton Fire Department volunteers who have met requirements and qualified for one year of service award credit for the East Hampton Volunteer Fire Department Length of Service Awards Program, LOSAP.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 66, deemed surplus, decommission and approve disposal of three Dell Power Edge servers from Village Hall, asset tag numbers 1696, 1828, and 2357.
So moved.
Second. Passed and carried? Yeah, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 67, approve $22,510.03 quote from WB Mason for office furniture and installation in the Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 68, approve rejection of bid received from Bartlett Tree Expert for the Two-Year Dutch Disease Treatment Program.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 69, approve bid received from William Strauss and Benjamin Tapperman for the Two-Year Dutch Disease Treatment Program.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 70, accept bids received from LV Benia Construction Corporation for the Two-Year curb and apron contract and the Two-Year sidewalk contract.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 71, approve $69,994.00 quote from Precision Safe Sidewalks to be paid from the assigned unappropriated fund balance.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 72, approve two-year quote from Landscape Details for lawn maintenance at Home Sweet Home Museum, $29,000 for each year, 2025 and 2026.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 73, approve $4,245.58 quote from Lincoln IT for the Department of Public Works cable cleanup rack and stack installation.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 74, approve $4,485.92 quote from Lincoln IT for the Main Beach Rack and Stack relocation.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 75, approve five-year agreement with Axon Enterprises for 25 Axon Taser 10s, paying $25,608 annually for a total cost of $128,040.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 76, approve $10,441.04 quote for four electronic handheld computer enforcement devices and software support from Fundamental Business Services Incorporated for parking enforcement.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 76, approve $10,000, I'm sorry, I said that one. Number 77, approve the employment of Jason Natusy as a part-time police officer at the rate of $30 per hour effective April 1st, 2025, upon his graduation from the Suffolk County Police Academy on March 27th of 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 78, approve enrollment for two police officers to attend the 39th Annual Police Security Expo 2025 to be held on June 23rd through the 26th of 2025 at the Atlantic City, New Jersey Convention Center at a cost of approximately $1,038 plus the cost of reasonable meals and travel expenses.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 79, approve enrollment for two public safety dispatchers to attend the Navigator 2025 Conference in Orlando, Florida, April 14th through the 17th, 2025, at a cost of approximately $4,320.88 plus the cost of reasonable meals and travel expenses.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 80, approve $8,139.84 quote from Long Island ROS GIS Incorporated for the 2025 data and Apple push notification updates for our CAD mapper and mobile CAD mapper.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 81, approve new member Erica Perez as an attendant of the Department of Emergency Medical Service EMS effective retroactively to February 10th of 2025, and approve Barbara Hanson to become an exempt member of the Department of Emergency Medical Service EMS effective retroactively to December 31st of 2024.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Let me just make a comment here. I'd like to welcome the new member, and I'd certainly like to thank Barbara for all her service in the ambulance. She's actually a resident of Delaware, and she would actually, the state, and she would actually come up here and do her, during the summer, do her required points. And she was terrific to work with, and we're going to miss her, but I wanted to thank her for all her hard work. She was really, well, she is a very nice person, yes.
Resolution number 82, approve employment of Colby Gill as a part-time emergency medical technician, basic EMTB, at the hourly rate of $30, and authorize him to work the off-season March 21st of 2025 to May 12th, 2025, in accordance with Civil Service Regulations, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 83, approve employment of Skylar Edwards as a part-time emergency medical technician, paramedic EMTP, at the hourly rate of $40, and authorize her to work the off-season, March 21st to May 12th of 2025, in accordance with Civil Service Regulations, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Just make a comment. I'd like to thank Jerry Turza, you know, for, and of course, our ambulance chief, and our volunteer chief, and all the members of the ambulance. They've really, they are really doing such a terrific job for our community. And, you know, gearing up for this summer is not an easy task, getting people to travel all the way out here. So I commend you, Jerry, for finding these paramedics that are willing to make the drive out here. It's costing us a little more money because we have to make it entice, you know, entice people to come out here for that horrible drive. So terrific job. Thank you.
Resolution number 84, accept new fire department member, Chris Como.
So moved.
Second. I'd like to thank Chris Como for joining our fire department. Yes, that is Chris Como that you're thinking of. So he's a longtime resident of East Hampton, and it's very nice that he's willing to join the fire department and put in community service for us. So we're looking forward to having him serve in the fire department. Did we approve that?
You say all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 85, approve East Hampton Fire Department 2025 bylaws dated March 17th of 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 86, approve employment of 2025 beach staff as listed to complete preseason and summer work effective April 1st of 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 87, notice a public hearing to be held on April 25th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, East Hampton, for introductory number four of 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 278, zoning, Section 278-7, fees, procedure, and other submission requirements, changes to the notice, provision requiring applicants to provide notice.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 88, notice a public hearing to be held on April 25th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, East Hampton, for introductory number eight of 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 256, taxation, Article 4, and to amend Section 256.7 exemption granted, amount eligibility, Section 256.8 lifetime extension of exemption, Section 256.9 application for exemption, and Section 256.9A effective date, so as to include and extend the provisions to the East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue and Auxiliary Squad.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 89, notice a public hearing to be held on April 25th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, East Hampton, for introductory number nine of 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 267, Article 5, Section 267-46 Vehicles Scoff Law.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 90, notice a public hearing to be held on April 25th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, East Hampton, for introductory number 11, 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 196 Noise, Section 196.1 Prohibited Noises, Evidence of Violation A10.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 91, adopt local law for introductory number five of 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 77 Beaches, Article 2, Main Beach Pavilion, Parking Lots, Lockers, and Facilities.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 92, adopt local law for introductory number six of 2025, a proposed local law amending Village v. Southampton Code, Chapter 267 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, General Regulations, Section 267.6 Parking prohibited in designated locations during certain hours.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 93, accept the East Hampton Village Foundation donation of $5,300 for the installation and annual subscription of the Emergency Notification System Regroup.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 94, approve the East Hampton Village Foundation's Exemplary Merit Award Program pursuant to the opinion rendered by the East Hampton Village Ethics Board.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 95, approve support for Earth Hour, encouraging residents of the Incorporated Village v. Southampton to turn off nonessential lighting indoors and out for one hour on Saturday, March 22nd, 2025, from 8:30 to 9:30 p.m. to combat unnecessary energy consumption and climate change.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 96, approve adoption of a home rule message request stating East Hampton Village's support for pending state legislation, New York State Assembly Bill 4710, New York State Senate Bill 4321, known as Protect Our Pedestrians, which shall authorize the village to participate in a pilot program to install and operate a stop sign photo violation monitoring system.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 97, accept retirement of Public Works Deputy Superintendent Michael D. Baucher with an effective retirement date of April 25th, 2025, with a $12,485.94 payout to be paid on April 30th, 2025, for accrued time.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 98, authorize the mayor to execute a separation agreement with Public Works Deputy Superintendent Michael D. Baucher, retirement date effective April 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 99, approve agreement with Pistol Creek LLC for consultant services at an hourly rate of $150 with a maximum of $10,000 per year.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
I want to thank the board for that. That specific resolution allows Darren, Dave, and myself to pick up the phone and tap into Mike Baucher's deep reservoir of institutional knowledge. There is a lot of it, and we will need it. Thank you.
Resolution number 100, approve promotion of Darren Downs to the position of Public Works Deputy Superintendent at an annual salary of $105,000, effective May 1st of 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. What's with no fanfare here? I don't get it.
Congratulations, Darren. Do a photo. Really, with this on? Get up some clean clothes. You got it? Yeah. Sandra's coming, too. Yeah, let me keep that. Another very prestigious question, right?
Yes.
Okay. Cue the band. All right, next up.
Resolution number 101, accept retirement of Principal Building Inspector Thomas Priato with an effective retirement date no later than June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
I think we have a split decision.
All right, so let's do a roll call on this. Sarah? Can we vote? No?
No, can't, he can't retire.
No, no. Sorry, Tom. Can't retire. All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I guess so.
All in favor?
No.
Aye. Passed and carried. Tom, do you want to say anything, or is this not the time?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the board. I didn't really have anything prepared, but I'm, you know, honored to have this be my final stop in the municipal jump that I've been doing through my career. And I have to say that by far, this is, this board's been the best for me to, to work for. Unwavering support, et cetera. So, yeah, I'm very pleased to have served the community for much short time that I'm here, four and a half years. But it's been a pleasure.
When I asked you, when I asked you to join, you gave me a commitment of three years.
Correct.
Right? So
Yep.
We benefited for a whole nother year and a half. So I want to thank you. You were wonderful to work with.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
And we're going to miss you, Tom.
Yes, and likewise.
Your sense of humor at the staff meetings is
Yep.
Going to be truly, truly missed.
Well, Tom's not leaving just yet. He's leaving no later than 2:30. So we're going to make a
Correct. No, I'll be here, and I'll, I'm going to ensure a smooth transition with Joe Palermo and, and keep the well-oiled machine that we have running, you know, on the, on the tracks or whatever the metaphor is.
Thanks again. Thank you, Tom.
And, you know, to Tom's credit, one of the reasons Joe actually agreed to come on board was, was the wonderful discussion that he had with Tom in terms of how it is to work here and really the, the product that we put out that he actually helped create. So thank you, Tom.
All right, next.
Resolution number 102, approve five-year employment agreement with Joseph Palermo as Principal Building Inspector at an annual salary of $145,000 effective no later than May 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Welcome aboard, Joe.
Resolution number 103, notice of public hearing to be held on April 25th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, East Hampton. For introductory number 10 of 2025, a proposed local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, Section 3C.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Just a note, this is not that we are going to break the 2% cap. This is what this resolution is. This just gives us the authority to do so if we need to, because we're still putting our budget together, so we don't know where things are going to fall. So we just want to have that authority to break it if we need to. All right, can I get a motion to close and go into executive session?
Make a motion to close and go into executive session.
So moved.
All in favor? Meeting is closed.